All right, meeting the order, pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for what you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, all present. Motion to accept the agenda.
I have an add-on on me.
Oh yeah, the add-on.
It's a discussion of the water and sewer projects by Anthony England from Barton and Leggoudis.
Oh, okay.
I also wanted to add to the agenda, manager resolution.
What's that?
A manager resolution.
What's manager's resolution?
It was a manager discussion and resolution, it's adding to the agenda.
Yeah, that's at the bottom.
No, I added, I put in an amendment to the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews, hands. Rochelle?
Yes.
Approval of minutes from December 17th, 2013, to village board meeting, you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second, okay, roll call Farman?
No, I was not present.
Larissa? Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution authorizing payment to EFC in amount of $8,000 from appropriation H200-410 for the state revolving fund financing agreement, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Second, roll call Carmen?
I just need an explanation about this, because I don't have it in my back-up.
It should be in your back-up. I don't know why you didn't get one in there.
Is this the last resolution I just got it tonight?
No, that's been in your folder ever since Thursday night, Friday morning.
Or the EFC security, that one?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews, okay, Rochelle?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing payment to ORR Pump and Control Services, LLP, in amount of $10,012 from the amount G8120.233 for emergency repairs of the racetrack pump station, Route 42 pump station for sewer department, current balance is $19,620.75, can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Carmen?
Yes.
Larissa?
Yes.
Reverend Matthews?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Okay, Glenn, you want to come up with that presentation, what you want, with the water agreement?
Yeah, actually, Anthony was going to...
Anthony?
Taken a heavy lifting, but thank you.
That's Barton and Leggoudis, our engineers for the village.
Happy New Year, Board.
Same to you, thank you.
We had met with George Pop in the middle of December, somewhere around the 15th, or November, the 15th or 16th, to talk about the water project, because we had submitted it and it kind of lagged. During that meeting, George had asked that we write a letter amending the previous report that we wrote to include the other things that the village, the board had asked us to include, such as the additional improvements at the plant, like filters, the other four filters that are in imminent need of repair. Phil had asked that we include some money for meter replacements because of the new zero lead law which took effect on the 4th. And Phil also asked that we add in the additional improvements at the plant for flocculators and other miscellaneous equipment there at the plant. In the middle of all of that, we also heard that the village is actually in negotiations with DEC on a consent order for a chemical bulk storage at the water plant. There's a couple of things that are in non-compliance and they just need to be brought up to compliance. So we had approached USDA whether or not they would be able to, the village would be able to include that in the project, and USDA had said they would. So basically, at this point, we're, we had submitted something to George and I copied everybody on December 19th with our amended project. And in that are those additional improvements that I just added on top of the replacement of the tanks up on Hospital Hill, which Phil reports are leaking again, and now that it's sub-zero temperatures, nobody can get up there to fix it. So we're looking at replacing that tank, looping some of the water mains throughout the village and some other improvements throughout the village, which was the $5.1 million project, at least. So with all of the improvements that we've added in, the chemical bulk storage, the filters, now if you recall, the village spent $104,000 rehabilitating two filters this year, or last year, excuse me. So when we add in all those other improvements, we have estimated the new project to be about $5.95 million. But really, all that comes down to is an increase of $123 a year per user. That's existing users, that's not once the Concord starts drawing water. Once the Concord starts drawing water, the number of EDUs are going to go up considerably and that cost is going to be spread out over not only the village residents, but also the Concord that's drawing the water. So it, because the village charges based on usage. So we're looking at $123 increase, we're estimating the existing system debt to be about $652, and this would add $123, bringing it to $775. Per user, per household. And this project, if USDA decides that the village, you know, is high enough on the list for them to fund, wouldn't take effect. This funding wouldn't take effect for a couple of years. So basically, you know, you have to go through all the permitting and all the environmental reviews and all of the design before you actually got to incurring those costs. So just a recap of what we talked about in September, October, November. The village is a low-income community, is eligible for up to $750,000 in grant money. The village has already put in some money in improvements in the plant, so we're kind of looking to maybe get the village have that as a local contribution. So we're trying to come up with the best kind of funding scenario through USDA, but currently the rate through USDA is around 3.5%. So that's kind of what the terms that USDA would be offering, you know. And again, that's subject to all the underwriting and responses. So George took this, he's reviewed this, he's had some conversations with Lelou regarding some budget issues and some budget concerns. And basically, George is now at a point where they're, he's requiring a revised project budget for me, which was provided in the submittal by the 19th, but basically, it would require the village to sign it. And then that, basically, that now says that the village wants to proceed with the project. He needs a more advanced or in-depth look at the costs per equivalent dwelling unit, and then he needs a budget for the next five years showing how the village is going to encounter this debt and then pay it back. So all of those things are kind of like the next step. And from that, you'd get an offer from USDA for the project. So at this time, it's either, it's up to the board whether or not they want to move forward, but we would just need the direction from the board as to how, you know, the board wants to proceed, if at all, with this project.
Are you talking about 120 a year for customer?
Yes.
For residents, so in water only?
Yes.
Only in water?
Annual.
Annual, because we pay quarterly, if I pay 70 in waters to 80, plus they're going to add another 120.
Right, it's important to note, trustee room, that the village charges all of its users based on usage.
Yeah.
They don't charge based on a capital operation and maintenance. So we're calculating it based on USDA's formula, which is a capital operation and maintenance dollar. So when you look at it and you think that right now the village is charging $4.35 a thousand or 100 cubic feet, you know, when you think about it in that perspective, it would come out to be less.
So if I pay 280 a year, it's going to be another 120, $400 a year, plus we're talking about raising the sewer, too?
Again, trustee room, that, this 123 is based on a cost per EDU based on USDA's formula, not the way the village charges. The way the village charges is a cost per gallon.
Yeah.
So you only pay for what you use. And by the time this project's implemented, it's then anticipated that the Concord would have been connected in, so that 123 that I'm talking about is going to be spread out over a much larger number of EDUs. The way the formula works out currently, the Concord would be 40% of the water usage in the village. So right now, the village is using somewhere between 700 and 900,000 gallons a day. The Concord wants 375,000 gallons a day. So that's 40% of what the village uses a day. So the Concord would be paying 40% of that.
What's going to happen too, was I met with George Pop and Lelou a couple of days ago, and we were talking about the EFC financing. The EFC is going to short...
That's the sewer.
Right.
That's the sewer.
We spoke sewer and water.
Right.
The EFC, they're going to do the short-term with the EFC and the USD will do the long-term. But what we're doing is that we have multiple projects in the village. There's about, there's probably 20 projects that are moving forward in the village. With the EPT, that's going to offset the cost of this water. I mean, we've been talking about water and sewer for a couple of years now. Everyone knows, and this board, well, some are new, but we all know that this, this village, and I keep saying the same thing, is literally falling down on us, because no one has actually done any work. I mean, I sometimes I'm redundant saying the same thing. This building, for an example, is the wear and tear of no one doing anything. So now we're in a position now where we have to put up or shut up or get out of here. We have to fix it up. That's with the water sewer. This stuff is ancient. I mean, we all sit here, look at the bills, what we're signing, those flocculators, that all, those things are tremendous amount of repairs and money and patch-up jobs. So we have to go forward and fix this stuff. We're spending millions of dollars looking at it. Down there, the heat cost, the heat of this building is thousands of dollars. It's going out the toilet. So if anyone wants to look at what I'm saying, please come to my office and I'll explain it to you and I'll show you the cost of what we're spending and what we're, what's going out the window, but the cost by fixing all this stuff will, will, it's going to come back to us and we have no choice. This stuff is up on the hill, anyone has a car, matter of fact, we can all walk there. Water is literally coming out of those towers, running out of there, and there's holes. It costs us $400 for someone to just solder a hole. We've been doing that 100 times, so I won't say it no more, but we have to get it done. And that's why with the, with this financing, it is a cost that we have to pay for. And what happens is that maybe with the water, the sewer, we got, we got 7 million grant on the sewer. The water, we were talking to George, maybe the USDA will get some money to us where we can get some more grant money and help us out. But the long-term is what's going to happen. This village is moving forward, just like I said. With the EPT that's happening, the recinal's moving out of there, we have 20 projects. Matter of fact, we, the village has sold a property today, two properties today, that we've been working on, me and Mr. Snowden, we have, we put them out for bid, they both sold. One guy's buying a building in the village and he's doing a three-story office building. He's going to take all his employees from New York City and Long Island, because it's so expensive, and bring them here and do an office. And he's going to do a lot more things in the village. But we have 26, I mean, if anyone sees, see what we're talking about, we have 26 projects. They are going to start paying good revenue, everything's off the tax roll, that's what's coming to this village.
On the tax roll.
I mean, excuse me, it'll be on the tax roll.
Everybody's off the tax roll.
But you will see, if you will see if what we're doing, it's took, it's been, it's taken us...
No, taken.
It's taken, excuse me, taken. It's been four years, maybe, maybe the way I'm speaking a little bit is because you hear so much negative about no one's doing nothing, you're not doing anything, the village is falling apart. This village is financially stable. I wish someone would come to my office, I keep saying, people come to my office and see what we have. I haven't had one person yet come to my office. This village is financially stable, we're moving forward, we have 22 projects that are going forward, ZBA, planning board, we're full, everything's moving. I'm not going to pat myself on the back, but I just want people to say, please, enough of the press, enough of the negativity with the village, and start saying what we're doing in this village, opposed to saying, someone called me a name and someone called me... It's politics that we're doing here, but the work in this village is being done. And praise this board for doing a good job. And just like I said, come to my office and see what this mayor and this board is doing, and if, and I'll say it again, if this mayor is, doesn't know or manage or whatever you want to call me, if it's not right and you're not happy with me and if you find the fault, I'll quit, I'll walk out this door tomorrow. The ones that, the nice, the ones that always have that negative stuff, come to my office and if you prove me wrong, I'm going to look at the camera, you prove me wrong and I quit, I resign. All right? Thank you.
Anthony, I'd just like to say, I didn't get a copy of that report, but did we break down each project's portions of the projects, like the relooping, the tanks and all that, and separately itemize them and price them out separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The, um... The repairs of the treatment plant are about $850,000, the new tank is about $1.5 million, looping the dead ends is about $2.2 million, and rehabilitating of some booster pump stations is, I'll call it, $550,000.
The relooping is $2.2 million?
Yes. A lot of relooping, so. You got the flocculation chambers at $200,000, the bulk storage improvements about $100,000, some miscellaneous electrical and concrete work and filter work. And, yeah, we got about, uh... 700, 7,500 feet of water main. So we're about $120, $125 a foot.
It's a mile and a half.
Yeah. Yeah.
We could come up with a better system than the relooping?
We can sit down and talk about it during the design, but, you know, we would need to be authorized to proceed with all these improvements with the USDA and that would be...
What if we, today, what if we voted to proceed, what is, what else has to be done? To lend the money?
As I said, right now, what USDA needs is a budget for five years, showing that the village can afford the project and pay it back, which is something the village did for the sewer. The Form E, signed by the village, a letter saying this is kind of what the project that we want to proceed forward with, and we can prepare that for the village to put on its letterhead to forward to USDA, and then more detailed breakdown of the number of EDUs and the cost.
So this is, what about, I'm going to change you, just a question about the sewer. We don't hear nothing yet, but...
I'm going to talk about that once we're done here.
About what we met, three and a half hour?
Yes, yes.
But I think this, with the water, we talked about it with Lelou, and we'll see what the board says, but I think the application was submitted already, right? So we're moving on that.
The pre-application.
Right, the pre-app, so we're moving forward.
Right.
So, so does the board have to make a decision on going forward? Is that what you want with the water?
If the board wishes to move forward, I'd ask that they pass a resolution to move forward with the project.
I mean, I would, I would like to move, it's up to the board if they decide. Do you need it tonight or do you want the board to...
But things are going to be more formal, because you're talking about a lot of money, you know?
You want, we'll give it...
Right, you can look, the board can look at our memo from December 19th, and we can talk about it at the second meeting in January.
All right, is that good, for the board to decide? Okay.
Now, we talked about concrete tank versus the...
It's a glass line bolted steel.
Oh, I thought we talked about concrete.
We did, but glass line bolted steel is cheaper.
Well, that's good, save something.
Glass line bolted steel is about $300,000 cheaper.
Is it just as, hold up just as well, than concrete?
Yeah.
So you don't change anything that you send out the email?
From December 19th at 11:03 AM, I didn't change anything.
Okay.
So what we said was, we was going to do a new concrete tank and the other tank we was going to have on standby. Is that the same plan what we talked about?
It's a new glass line steel tank and leave the other tank empty.
Empty.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the preliminary engineering report that we submitted back last year, that copies will provide to the board.
So that tank will stay there, yes, a new tank, without it?
Right, one of the tanks will come down and we'll put up a new tank, that's what's currently proposed, I believe. That's in the preliminary engineering report. This is just an amendment to it, adding some stuff. Okay? So right now, you know, we could talk about it again after you've had a chance to review it, but that's what, you know, USDA is asking for, is all about it for me. Okay?
Is there a deadline on George Pop's?
Well, if we, if we do it at the next board meeting, which is two weeks, right?
Yeah.
So I think that will be okay for the board.
So you wanted to talk about sewer next week?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so you're done?
Well, he has some, Anthony has some things to say, but I just want, can I respond to this question from Mr. Snowden? James, we could go over this with you, but I want to assure you that we worked very closely with Phil, we looked at every line that's dead-ended, where the low-pressure areas are, where the areas are of water that's discolored, because there's the dead-end lines and areas where there's problems in terms of firefighting capacity, because there's, you know, low pressure, and we could certainly, you know, go over that with you, if you'd like.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think so the most important is to go over with Phil, because Phil has the direct...
No, no, but I'm saying that...
I believe what he tell, because I called him and asked him questions too about it.
I'm saying...
So I think so he should be more informed of that anything.
Yes, but I'm saying that that's where the information came from, and as the building inspector, you want to discuss that, where we're at your service to discuss it, but I just want you to know that's where it came from.
If I ask a question, I'm going to ask him Phil.
Yeah.
Because we demand making policies and both for.
Yeah, Phil asked for the flocculators to be added, he asked for the water meters to be added, and he asked for the filters to be added, and the chemical bulk storage to be added, so that's why they're all in there.
But the reason why I'm asking, because all the work has to be permitted out, so I have to have some kind of...
It's water, D.
Okay? Water has to be permitted as well.
I just direct them to add the one...
Thank you.
So what I just passed around to everybody is a Form E, which is what we use as the project budget for the sewer plant, and eventually we would use for the water plant improvements. So this Form E was prepared last January. We have not prepared a Form E since last January.
So it's a year?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're talking about a year?
A year.
So how long?
USDA requires us to be filled out before the village pays any bills.
So you have a year that is back and...
Right, we haven't been paid on this project since June.
Do you meet with the treasurer now?
Yes.
And before with other past, Form E treasurer and so?
Yes. So this is a year old. There's been expenses which are not identified on this, such as renewal of the ban, reissuance of the bond that was done last year, engineering and legal costs, and some other interest and principal that's already been paid. So this is not up to date, just so you know. This is the most recent that has been prepared. We need the treasurer to help us prepare the next one. Okay? This shows the $15 million project, okay? That's how old it is. In order to proceed forward, EFC and USDA need to know what size project the village wants to move forward with. In November, October, November, the village passed the bond resolution for up to $21.5 million. But that doesn't, that doesn't say the village wants to proceed with a $21.5 million project. So we would need the village to say what size project they want to proceed, they, the village feels comfortable proceeding forward with. That's where we're at. EFC has come back, just like the mayor said, and said, we will not provide any long-term financing, we're only going to provide short-term financing. And they said, go to USDA. We've spoken to USDA and USDA has said, this is considered a cost overrun, we cannot fund the whole thing, so you have to reduce costs in order for us to fund this. And in reducing the costs, you need to commit to that cost and show us that you can afford it. So again, that's the five-year budget, the same that we're preparing, that we would prepare for the water, a revised Form E with all of the updated budget numbers on it, and then another letter that says this is the project that we want to move forward with. Okay? Unfortunately, we were only, Barton and Leggoudis was only able to negotiate with the low bidders to hold their prices till January, the last week in January. USDA, in order to get a funding commitment from their national office, needs all of this information this week, in order to get a decision back, so that we would have enough time to award the contracts and proceed forward with the project, using the current set of low bidders.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about, we don't need to be in a project to, they are the $6.5 million, they only will have $15 million, you base it on a $15 million?
If the village wants to proceed with a $15 million project, that's what we need to do, and then we'll react accordingly. But we need to know what size project the village wants to proceed forward with. Again, remember, the increase to each EDU was $8 a year. So we're talking about an increase in sewer fees less than $8 a year in the reduced scope of the project. If we take all of the low bidders, as they bid, we're at a $22.5 million project. We reduce the contingency, we take out all of the add alternates and all of the deducts, we're down to a 21, excuse me, a $20 million project. That's taking out the collection system improvements, that's taking out the roof replacements at the filter building, the solids building, the headworks building. That's taking out the expansion of the solids building, that's taking out the expansion of the headworks building. That's taking out a couple of other things, such as site paving, site lighting, and other miscellaneous type improvements that aren't going to affect the operation of the treatment plant in order to meet a speedies permit.
But you said the roof, right?
That's out.
Take that out?
At 20 million, that is out.
But you would need that, because all the heat's going out the window, right? Am I correct? So you wouldn't pull that out and keep that in. We have to pay for it, but that's where you're going to save your money. You know?
Again...
No, no, I didn't understand what you're saying.
If you want to proceed with that size project, then you need to find money for that size project, and EFC has said they're not going to give you that much money.
You know what we'll do, if you could, tomorrow, could you come, could you come, we, can you have a meet, we'll have a meeting with the treasurer, myself, and we'll put that together, and we'll, we'll see which project the funding with the treasurer, and if we have to spend, you know, she'll have to see where the money's at or whatever the bonding is, and then we can have the numbers. And if we have to borrow it, but you don't want to, you'd have to borrow, but you don't want to be senseless by doing a Band-Aid job either, you know what I'm saying? So we'll put it together with you.
The roof replacements you can do at a future time, they're not going to affect your permit.
Okay, okay.
The paving on the site, you can do at a future time, they're not going to affect your permit. Site lighting, you could do it at a future time, it's not going to affect your permit. So these are, what has been eliminated are all the things that, once gone, you'll still be able to treat the water that goes through the plant. Right? We haven't cut process yet.
Yet? So if we could, if you could, we could, we'll meet with Lelou, myself, as soon as possible.
We would need some direction from the board.
But you said that you had, you know, the front report E, and then you are back a year ago, so we really don't have any report of the board how much money already been spent, because if you don't have it, we don't have it.
You should have a budget that gets reported and prepared to you by the treasurer.
Yeah, but if you say that's a day by day, we have, like, we have resolutions on time paying that, but we don't have the total or more, no, the balance, you know?
You should have a capital balance of the project.
Yeah, but that...
I mean, that should be handed to you.
Report E explaining you more how much you've been expenses in each team, and you don't have it for a year back.
Well, this just tells you, this just tells you how much the gross has been split up, that's all that is.
But we're talking about that on the $15 million, basing that and the $15 million.
That's part of the tax.
So how we look with time, Anthony?
Like I said, USDA needs all of these cost reductions into them this week, in order to have a decision before the bids expire. In order to have a decision before the bids expire. If the village is of the opinion that we only wanna proceed with a fifteen million dollar project, then all bets are off and the six and a half million dollar, or six and a half million dollar grant is now in.
No grant really, it's a loan.
No, there's a six and a half million or seven million dollar grant.
I don't talking about that. I talking about the one that we sitting with the people from Albany.
Those people are off the table. They're, they're out.
They don't wanna lend to the village, more clear. They don't wanna lend that money, uh, two point nine percent of the village, exactly. But now, we, we don't, how are we gonna put the rest of the money to be more than a fifty million too?
Right.
If they don't lend it to us, that was a two point nine, three point zero. And this is the first time I know, because nobody report to, I, I don't know, you know, but I don't know that there was. I talked to George P, he say he don't hear nothing about yet the Albany, they decided or know that it was no lending. They added six and a half million.
This is something that I learned very late in the day Friday, and I clarified it yesterday.
You don't know, 'cause you wasn't here last time.
No, you know, you know what, there's no public call, there's no public.
So it's really, how much, how much does the village wanna proceed with a project and what size project? Is it, is it fifteen million, is it twenty million? What size project do you wanna proceed forward with? And then, we could sit down and look at everything. I mean, we really need direction, so that we can share that with the funding agencies for the long-term debt, so they know. USDA has said they will not consider six and a half million dollars. That's twenty to twenty-five percent of their annual state budget. They will not consider it. You're taking money away from other municipalities in New York State.
So I think so we should just base it on a fifty million, that's it. And then you do whatever. If it's a needed roof, and then it's different, when you're talking about only the roof. But from the beginning, we, we, you know, if they don't lend it, it's because really is no money. And they already looking at all the financials.
I don't know that.
But you know what, then we should just base it on a fifteen million, that we've been talking for a long time.
We'd have to go with the twenty-one million?
Is that gonna affect our taxpayer?
Well, there's some, there's gonna be some kind of, yeah.
Eight dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. All this money.
We'll have to discuss it then.
We'll have to discuss it.
Yeah. So when do we, when do you wanna?
We need to call emergency meeting, but we really need, we need more information about the Albany and all the decisions too, you know? I mean, you just can't.
You wanna know, you need to, you need to call Lilo and speak to her, because EFC spoke to her?
George was here the other day, and then he, he was doing it, the Form E. And they was talking about the water too.
Okay.
And I don't interrupt them.
And they talked about the sewer?
But it's not, you, you the one with the grants and appoint and apply, but you should get more, a little more information.
Anthony, what we'll do is I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Yesterday was Monday.
And we'll sit down with, I'll talk to the treasurer tomorrow and we'll come with a census with the board. Or if, if, if anything, we'll have emergency meeting.
Okay.
I mean, bottom line, emergency meeting would, we can have a meeting anytime we want, emergency meeting, so.
Can we have an emergency meeting and sit down with Lilo, um, all of us together? Or is that something?
No, it has to be called a meeting, because I have to evolve to give a permission.
Or if anyone.
No, not publicly comment, not publicly comment.
We got one minute for public comment. Once he's done, we'll have public comment, alright?
So, you know, if, if tomorrow I, you come, I gonna talk to Lilo and then we can call emergency meeting, we call emergency meeting?
It's, it's gonna take time for Lilo to put the num- poll numbers together for this budget.
Okay.
Alright.
I, I just, it's gonna take time for her to poll those numbers, and it's gonna take time for us to poll numbers.
We just wanna make sure we don't lose dates, and we wanna get this thing done. We don't wanna lose that seven million. We don't wanna lose any of this stuff. So we, we have to just act on it and start moving forward on it, what we have to do.
We call emergency meeting tomorrow or next day.
Glenn, we'll call a meeting.
I was just gonna point out, so I re-emphasize something Anthony said, and that is, if you make a decision tonight to go with, with the, with the project at whatever number, it's not like this affects the average taxpayer tomorrow. This project's gonna take fifteen to eighteen months to build. And then the, the rates will go into effect after that. So you're talking about a year and a half from now. What Anthony is trying to do is keep the pro- keep the process moving, keep the funding that's listed behind you.
Right, right.
You know, stable. And we did meet with Phil and we went through every aspect of the plant to see what could be cut. To still have you end up with a modern, energy-efficient facility.
And for the board members, if you wanna talk with Phil, Phil is the water and sewer superintendent. So if the board wants to meet with Phil to ask him any questions, he's available every day, Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty.
We should all know that now.
Okay.
And then we won't be buying any more pumps or anything, right?
At the treatment plant.
Yeah.
At, at the reduced cost, one of the things that, actually, that's, thank you, you reminded me of something. At the reduced cost, one of the things that we took out of the project is the collection system improvements. So that's all the improvements at the pump stations and everything, uh, the manhole rehabilitations and sewer linings. We, we said that's, because the village hasn't bid that yet.
Right.
So we took that off the table.
Took it off.
Right. EFC actually has a funding stream out there now called Storm Mitigation Loan Program for hardening of infrastructure. Now that comes at a seventy-five percent zero-interest loan and a twenty-five percent grant. So, if the village desired, we could apply the collection system improvements to that program. And if successful, you've now achieved a twenty-five percent grant of those improvements. So you've achieved more grant monies. The, the other option that we've talked about is breaking it out completely as a separate project and funding it through EFC. And because of, excuse me, because of all of the debt the village is assuming with the treatment plant, that would theoretically classify the village as a hardship. And that would put the village over a threshold for a zero percent loan for thirty years. Or, the village can choose to go to USDA and separate it out as a separate project there. They've also offered to do it as a separate project. So, the best bet for the village right now is to go after the mitigation loan program funds for the collection system improvements. And then, if that falls through, go to EFC for zero percent. And then, if EFC, you know, says no, then go to USDA, 'cause they're gonna have, they're gonna have, you know, um, an interest rate associated with their loan.
Did they ever say anything about the hardship we applied for? Did, was there anything on that?
It was withdrawn. The village withdrew it.
We'll just put it all together, see what's the best way, and we'll talk about it and try to get it going. Whichever, it has to get done, the bottom line. We have to move on, move with this.
Just, just in terms of timing though, Anthony, I know on the water, it wasn't as pressing, but it sounds like the sewer, you need to get an answer sooner rather than later.
For, for the sewer, for the treatment plant, I need to have an, an answer like ASAP. For the water, we could do that in two weeks. And for the storm mitigation loan program, if the village wants to move, the deadline for that is April. So we would need to know sometime in February. That way, we have enough time to prepare all the documents and the submittals necessary for that, if the village wants to proceed forward with that.
Alright. So we'll let the board do a couple days of their homework and they'll come back and we'll have, if anything, we'll have emergency meeting. But we'll get it done, alright?
Are there any questions now or?
No, we just wanna, we have all the papers already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, public comment, sir?
I see no money ever called.
Yo, listen.
Public comment.
Last time I was here, this, this, I'm looking around. I'm seeing all these people here that wasn't here last time, right? And you was talking about some good stuff, what, what was presented. The amount of money that was issued to us people as far as grants and stuff like that. And I'm looking to the right of you, or to the left of you, to the left of you. They wasn't there neither. Wasn't nobody here. Wasn't nobody here. Wasn't nobody here. And you was talking about some good stuff, what was going on in this village, right? And, my thing is this, is that, where you at? Right there. You was just up here talking about what you needed and what you wanted and what was, what was expected, you know what I'm saying? And the last meeting, it was some positive stuff going on about where you were at. You wasn't here, wasn't none of you are here.
I was here.
You was here, I was here, he was here, he was here. My man right here, he was here. About, about for that, right? But, yeah, I'm gonna wrap this up, and it is a point to this. It is a point to this. And I am gonna rather wrap it up. But you ain't tell him to wrap it up. You ain't ask him was it a point to it? You ain't ask it, and this is business. This is the same business. See, but, yo, y'all, y'all off the hook. Y'all off the hook. Y'all off the hook. Y'all off the hook. And the reason why I say you're off the hook, because things that matter to us, it's not no concern to y'all. It's not no concern to y'all. But you allow this man to get up here and say whatever you wanna say, as long as he want. Yeah, you laughing about it like it's funny, and it's not funny to me. It's not funny to me. It's not funny to me. And the reason why it's not funny to me, the reason why I don't see it's no, no, no issue to it, no, no laughing matter to it, is because it's people that look just like me and look just like you. That's involved in what I'm about to say. Listen, I don't even wanna talk to you no more.
Alright, Tim, thanks.
Listen, listen, listen.
I appreciate the comment.
Y'all come here and y'all speak about what you wanna do, as far as it's something that's coming in your pocket. Coming in your pocket, coming in your pocket, something that you could, you could aspire on. Something that you could get some type of benefit from. Some type you could get, I, what I'm talking about, I'm not getting no benefit from it. I'm not getting no benefit from it, other than, other than I'm talking about what our people need. Point blank. Point blank. No more, no less, no more, no less. Because last week, last time that this meet was her, you wasn't here.
We wasn't.
You wasn't here.
You're right.
You wasn't here.
In six year, I lost one day.
You wasn't here.
You was not here for four, six years.
Listen, but I gotta vote, I gotta vote, I gotta vote, I gotta vote for you.
You know what, five minutes finish, five minutes.
Oh, now it's five minutes, now it's five minutes, but you let this man speak for longer than one minute.
He get paid to do that, that's what they paying for.
I don't get paid to do nothing, I'm telling you.
He get paid him, no, he get paid him.
I don't get paid to do this.
He's gotta report to them.
I don't get paid to do that.
That's why we not doing it.
I'm reporting. As a concerned citizen, I'm reporting. I don't get paid to do this, no I don't. No, I don't.
Thank God, 'cause you don't deserve a penny.
I don't deserve a penny. I don't deserve a penny. From you, from you, I don't deserve a penny. I ain't looking for a penny from you. I'm not looking for a penny from you.
Hey, um, Timmy, just have a seat, alright? Just have a seat, have a seat. Have a seat, no, it's alright, have a seat, Tim. Don't, have a seat, Tim. Come on, man, have a seat.
I should be able to voice my opinion for coming here and saying what I gotta say.
Thanks, Tim.
Just like them. I'm a registered voter, just like them.
Alright, thank you.
Just like them. I'm a registered voter, just like them. Just like them. I'm a support, who I wanna support. How I'm a support?
Come on, Tim, Tim. Alright, have a seat. Ma'am, yes, ma'am, come on, ma'am.
Oh, okay. My name is Diana. I come here every meeting. I wasn't here last meeting, because it was a snowstorm. And you should give the representation some respect. Thank you.
Tim, um, alright, you done, sir?
Yeah, I'm done.
My name is Jeff Siegel, and I would like to, um, just to, uh, address the board. I don't really expect an answer tonight, but I would expect a written answer since I did mail to you a letter on December fourth about the Bagel Festival. So, to the mayor and the village board members, I've submitted a letter to all of you and have had no response. I am here this evening to ask what your intentions might be with regards to the Bagel Festival for two thousand and fourteen. If there's not a response from the village, then I will have to assume that you are not interested in providing all of the businesses in the village of Monticello with business, customers, tourists, and the like. Last year was the first of an annual event that the village board declared Monticello as the bagel capital. Are you now going back on something you already agreed to? This festival, this festival that has been created with the support from the village, the town, the county, and the state of New York, added life and renewed hope with the local people of Sullivan County, the town of Thompson, and yes, the village of Monticello. This event, as you all know, is one of the most successful events with no mishaps. The police department commended how smooth everything went. The village was left almost in the same condition as when the fest- as before the festival started, which was very clean. So, as I hear the mayor say how important it is for positive projects to be committed and happen in Monticello, it is either time to act on this and continue the ball rolling and promote commerce, promote business, promote tourism, and job creation in the village of Monticello, and be true to the mayor's words, or I will understand that if you decide to do nothing, then it was just a bunch of words. I do not live in the village, however, I am a born and raised resident of Monticello, a lifelong resident of Monticello, graduated Monticello High School. I'm also a local businessman. But the Bagel Festival is about giving life to the village, not just for one day, but for the year and years to come. So if you are truly interested in the benefit of the people that are village residents and businesses here, you will do the right thing for them.
I'm not, I'm just gonna make a quick comment. Usually, I don't go back and forth, but Mister, but Jeff with the Ba- with, well, I'm not gonna address it to Jeff, but I'm gonna address it to Mr. Snowden. The Bagel Fest came to Monticello. Jeff came to, the Bagel Fest came to Monticello, I sat with Jeff. I waived every fee that he should have paid. He should have paid thousands of dollars in this village. I worked with Jeff, waived everything, and, and now you came back again. I told you with Mr. Snowden, you talk to Mr. Snowden, give you all your permits and move forward. I don't know why you come with that. You, I just met you, and you don't have to play the politics, but I don't know why you just came there. Jeff, uh, Mr. Snowden, was he just in the office?
I sent a letter.
Talk with, come to my office, come to my office.
And I got the receipt back, and I got, that's it. I just told, I told you to talk to James. I gave you the free pass. All the permits were filled out, and I have not heard anything back in a month. Talk to him. I'm the one that gave you all the free pass. I should have charged you for all of that stuff. Mr. Snowden's not the only one I need to talk to about certain things.
Well, we'll talk, come to my office and we'll talk about it.
No, no, but I need to speak to the entire board.
Jeff, please, Jeff, Jeff, didn't I, didn't I help you with the Bagel Fest? Didn't I waiver all those fees, which I didn't have to, and I shouldn't even say that? So come on, Jeff.
The only fee was four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, see, Jeff, meet me in my office tomorrow with Mr. Snowden. Come on, we don't have to come here with that. I mean, come on.
You know, this is, I just wanna say.
I'm here, I'm here for the comment, because I had no response to a letter that I mailed certified return receipt to the entire board.
Alright, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, we'll talk about it when you come to my office.
You know, I just wanna.
Anyone else for public comment?
Excuse me, I gonna, I gonna say, Jeff, yeah, I read your letter. I wasn't here last meeting, but you're right. It's, the fee should not even be a concern about you, because you really bring a lot of people. And that's what they make in this village, is to cap all the people that, I never saw any, any, any event that has been bringing so much people, and it was great last summer.
I brought five thousand people to the village, including your store.
It was great.
You made plenty of money that day.
Jeff.
As all the other businesses did in town.
Okay? But I'm here, I'm here, because there was no response to a letter that I sent to the village.
Alright, we'll talk about it, but, you know, don't use, don't come here for that. The, the, it's enough issues going on now, Jeff.
Where else would I come?
You don't have to make the political.
I would come to the village board, to address the board and the mayor.
Jeff, Jeff.
You're right, you did it right in.
But where else should I come?
Jeff, go to Chris Company with that, don't come here with that.
Chris Company?
I see your statements. Go to, alright, anyone else?
Or is it because, or is it because I publicly, I publicly, if you wanna start this, I'm happy to do it. But you know that Chris Company and Jeff Siegel publicly said, "We should have you step down and you shouldn't be in office." So you're not really too happy with me?
The next one, please.
But I don't see anybody else bringing five thousand or ten thousand people to the village of Monticello.
You're done?
I was done before.
Uh, next, you're next?
I think so we should proceed and have he, because this is something good for the community.
It definitely is good for the community.
But doesn't need to do, and, and building inspector, the board has to decide and give a key permission.
Anyone else, anyone else?
I make a motion to allow Jeff to proceed with that.
Anyone else for public comment, sir?
Can I say, why do people have to be threatened with the cops every time somebody has something to say? I don't understand.
My name is David Gilman, and I'd like to know, um, if and when the traffic light on North Street and Liberty Street is gonna be fixed. It's been out for a long time, and I think it's a busy intersection.
I voted up months ago.
It's still gonna be ordered?
All the light on.
There's a part, there's a part, huh, there's a part on order, it's coming in. There's a part coming in. Anyone, anyone else for public comment?
You know, it's, it's another thing, an agenda that I, I amended and everybody wrote, so. You know, it's, it's another thing, an agenda that I, I amended, and everybody wrote, so, you know, I just wanted to say.
Okay, the mayor manager report, I'm good, mayor manager report, I'm gonna skip, yeah.
I have, I have, I'm sorry, I didn't know, moving on. Um, I guess I, I just recently found out that Larissa Bennett was unceremoniously dismissed as deputy mayor here in the village, and I, I really don't know Larissa from her municipal work. But for about eight years, I served on a community board, where she did exceptional work as a representative, helping low-income families, helping people access medical services. And I don't understand why we would not have somebody like her, who really has, I guess she's such a credit to the community, such a credit to young women in the community, in that role. I'm just wondering, I think, I'm disappointed, I'm very disappointed.
Thank you.
No, Leo over there is not making progress.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sir, sir?
He's gonna make a comment, she's gonna make a comment.
Sir?
First, I'd like to thank you for that. And I just wanted to say that I'm still elected official, I'm still a trustee, and I still serve on this board. Whether I have the title of deputy mayor or not, there's still a job that needs to be done in this village. And I will continue to use the integrity that I've always used as an individual to proceed and do that, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Did you have anything, Eli?
No, no, I just-
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, mayor manager report, I'm gonna skip.
You know, I have something on the agenda. And amended the agenda, excuse me, we, we, with, or you wanna say you report first, before I?
No, no, I already said my report, when I spoke, I'm not, I'm, I'm done with my report.
Okay, I, I have, you know, uh, I just wanted the public to know that today, we all have a meeting with the controllers, um, the New York State Controllers.
Now, I think that should come-
Excuse me, I don't talk to you, let me talk, please, I'm entitled to that, my op-
You're out of order with that.
No, no, I don't, excuse me, you are the order, you are the order.
Let me tell you, until we give response, you're out of order with that. Now, you're bringing this out, you are out of order with that.
I'm sorry, you, I got your opinion.
No, out of order.
No, I, excuse me, I said, I said we met with the controllers.
She said it that day, that you shouldn't do anything with this, until we respond.
We say, I say, I, we met with the controllers.
Now, you're out of order, cause it's not finished.
Excuse me, you interrupted, and when you, when you talk.
That's why I interrupted, cause you're out of order.
I met with the controllers today, and everybody here in this board do. And the village is completed in best situation, so I make a motion to release the manager, Gordon Jenkin as a manager, and have a professional manager. And I gonna repeat this, we need a professional manager, because there's no communication with some members of the board here.